Early in the morning, then I check it right. Had a little date with my baby last night. Now it's early in the morning.
Early in the morning.
Well, it's early in the morning.
Early in the morning.
Darling, it's early in the morning, and I ain't got nothing but the blues. Went to all the places where we used to go. When our house been cheating on love there no more. Now it's early in the morning.
Early in the morning.
Yeah, it's early in the morning.
Early in the morning.
Early in the morning, and I ain't got nothing but the blues. Went to girlfriend's house when she was out. Knocked on the phone and he began to show.
Get out there, boy!
Early in the morning.
Early in the morning.
Early in the morning.
Early in the morning.
Early in the morning, and I ain't got nothing but the blues. Went to dookie church to get something to eat. Went to look at me and said, "You're so little pink." You know, it's early in the morning.
Early in the morning.
Early in the morning.
Early in the morning.
Well, it's early in the morning, and I ain't got nothing but the blues. Well, it's early in the morning, and I ain't got nothing but the blues. Well, it's early in the morning, and I ain't got nothing but the blues.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mail to Ridgewood News, the record, and by submission to all persons entitled to same as provided by law of a schedule, including the date and time of this meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Howe.
Here.
Councilwoman Puccirelli.
Here.
Councilwoman Ritchie is absent. Councilwoman Walsh.
Here.
And Mayor Arrington.
Here. Please join us as we salute the flag.
By virtue of the Constitution of the United States of America, and the Constitution of the Republic of America, we give this call for the relief and justice for all.
Thank you. Please join us now in a moment of silence as we honor the American men and women serving in the armed forces, as well as those serving as first responders. Great, thank you very much. Good evening, everybody, and welcome. We have a full meeting tonight. We're going to be focused primarily on budget items. But before we do that, we'll go to public comments. Anybody have a question, comment, suggestion? Good evening.
Good evening. Boyd Loving, 342 South Irving Street. This morning, I picked up the record, and I saw this article on the front page of the local section about a meeting that took place last night that had, according to the record, over 30 people in attendance where a topic that might be of general interest to all taxpayers was discussed. I had heard a rumor on Monday that this meeting was going to take place, and was watching the Village's website to see if there was any announcement posted about the meeting. When I saw that there was no announcement, I assumed that it was just a rumor. So I was somewhat perplexed when I saw the article this morning, and there was no notice given to the public about this meeting. So I'm just curious to know why that meeting that took place was not -- why there was no information posted on the Village's website about the meeting, so members of the public who might have had interest other than the 30 who attended might have attended.
Sure, I'll be glad to answer that. We had a meeting. It wasn't a public meet -- it wasn't like a council meeting, per se. We had some residents that requested a meeting to talk about the construction that's going on over in Garber Square. Originally, it was going to be just a small meeting, the Village Manager and myself presumably, and Councilwoman Walsh, because she's the chair of the Citizen Safety Advisory Committee. And then the meeting just grew. So it was open to anyone. And, you know, as we said at the meeting last night, we're going to have another meeting if people want. It was just -- it was some residents that were particularly interested in that issue. They had some concerns and wanted to meet with us.
How did it happen that two members of the press were invited and taxpayers weren't invited?
I believe the -- and I don't want to speak for the press. I think because some of the residents had them on email exchange, and the emails that were floating around, and that's how I suspect.
So the press wasn't invited by either the manager or a member of the council?
I did not invite the press.
Did any member of the council invite the press?
No, I didn't.
I spoke to them about it. I didn't invite them.
No, let me tell you.
I think it was the email.
There was an email that I think folks were CC'd on, and then I actually believe I wrote an FYI because of the CC that I had previously -- I'm going to correct that. The previous CC I had seen that had Darius on it. I just sent an FYI that -- because I thought he was on the other emails.
Okay. Again, just some concern on my part that a meeting takes place, that there are 30 people present, it's a topic that is of general interest to many folks, and there's no announcement on the Village's website that this meeting is happening, and the press is there to cover it. It just seems as though most of the public was left out.
And nobody was left out. You're characterizing incorrectly, and I'm surprised you didn't call us or email us as you generally do when you hear something. So, you know, if you wanted to come, you could have come. It was a meeting that was open. You know, again, we were responding to requests from some residents. Nothing wrong there.
If you'd like, I could.
Follow-up on that. I did not know the time of the meeting, nor did I know the location of the meeting.
She could have called.
So I will correct you and say that I could not have attended because I had no information other than there was going to be a meeting.
My only point was you call and email us about a lot of issues, so you -- I'm surprised.
I mean, I could, if we'd like now. I was going to cover this. I was going to cover this in my manager's report.
What we do after public comment, just make sure then.
Okay, if there's any -- okay, fine. That's fine.
Any other public comment? Good evening. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you. Hi, I'm Nancy Green. I'm the library director in Ridgewood, and I just wanted to say that we at the library are deeply honored that the family of Roger Wiegand selected the Friends of the Library, as well as the American Horror Association, as the recipient of donations in his honor. And I've seen, you know, Roger here for many, many years, and always admired how he conducted himself, and I just wanted to say that we're very honored and we appreciate it. And I know you all knew him very well, too. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Nancy. Appreciate it. Any other questions or comments? Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Rahul Batia, and I am a new resident of Ridgewood. I moved here last year in the summer, primarily because I have two kids, and this village is an excellent place to raise kids, and it's a very kid-centric town, so I'm very happy for that.
Your address, please.
I'm sorry?
Your address for the record.
It's 309 Stevens Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm loving it here so far. It's a beautiful town. The kids love it. The kids have made many friends here. The one reservation I have, and it was a reinforcement as I was driving here on Van Deen Avenue, is that the roads have opportunities. If there's anything that can be done, I'm in favor of it, whether it boils down to raising taxes, primarily to focus on infrastructure, and that's something that I think this town needs. We want to be -- we have cited articles why Ridgewood is one of the best places to live. In fact, there was an article, I think last month, citing Ridgewood to be one of the best places to retire. We want to raise the bar and make sure our infrastructure is in the best shape. So anything that can be done, I'm supportive of that.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. And it's later on during the budget presentation, we do focus on paving the roads. And actually, Van Deen, I think we're in the process of now paving South Van Deen. We got a grant for North Van Deen, so once we get the capital allocated, we'll be able to bid out North Van Deen. So -- but we'll be talking about it more extensively later on, okay?
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any other questions or comments?
Should I do what?
All right, yeah, before we go on to suspend the work session and go into our special public meeting, Village Manager wanted to speak about our meeting last night.
Yeah, and answer mainly to Boyd, because I would have held this for manager's report, but since you brought it up, we might as well. Is that okay? So I think a couple of weeks ago, I forget the exact council meeting I spoke at, but I introduced Garber Square both from the perspective of the fact that we were going to be closing the roads, closing them, causing some traffic issues, and also from the point of view of the design of the project. And I spent a little bit of time on that a couple of weeks ago. It's a construction that's based on a complete streets plan, and the purpose is really pedestrian vehicle and bicycle safety, as well as much-needed aesthetic upgrades. There's more information on the website. You could see the plan on the website. There's a one-page summary on the website. So I won't go into a whole lot of detail about the design right here. The construction did meet with some resistance, particularly on the west side, and folks were concerned about the communication, or lack thereof at some level, as well as the congestion it might cause, based on the design. So as a result, they asked for a town hall meeting, a town hall-style meeting. Started out with, I don't know how many people, but it just kind of grew. And we had a detailed presentation at that meeting. Chris Ruttershouser went through the plan in great detail. We had Police Chief Ward and Captain Luthke and Fire Chief Van Goh there to answer any kind of questions that they might have had on safety issues, et cetera. As a result of listening to the residents' concerns and some of our own internal brainstorming that we have been doing, we're going to pursue a couple of things based on that meeting. And some of this is proposal, and I think we need to get with Bernie and the Citizen Safety Committee as well. But here's a couple of thoughts for the council to consider. We will do -- we will put traffic plates that record vehicle speed on certain roads. We'll probably start with Heights, because there were a lot of folks there from Heights Road last night that were complaining about speeding cars. We'll probably then go to West Ridgewood Avenue. We'll do Godwin. We'll do Franklin. And the point of this is to provide some more empirical data as to the traffic flows that are going through that area. You know, we had a lot of experience with those traffic flows, but this will actually give us data, and I think the residents were really looking for some more quantification, and I think we were, too. So another empirical thing we'll be doing is we're going to install mobile cameras at Garber and at Franklin to film a couple of weeks' worth of traffic, another way to get some empirical data on the project. To address some of the speeding concerns on Heights Road, John, Chief Ward, and Chris will begin the process of installing a stop sign on Heights itself, on the corner of Woodland, which we believe will slow down the traffic on Heights Road. Okay? So, but the other thing, and more significantly, in looking at the design, and again, listening to concerns about contingency plans, if in fact, traffic did get backed up, we started looking at an alternative to the design that would narrow the median, from an eight-foot median to a four-foot median, which leaves about 20 feet on each side at its narrowest. And it would be a contingency if traffic does not react the way we fully expect it to react when we channelize the traffic. So we started those conversations today. We have thought through some of the work we would have to undo to do this. It would be about, we think -- It would be about, we think about $45,000 worth of curb that we had already installed as well as some additional saw cutting that we have to do. We would lose some of the beautification component of the design because the eight-foot median gave us the opportunity to put out trees. We would still keep the lights. And so as a result of coming this far on the, on this potential recommendation, we decided today to rearrange the work that was going on at Garber Square and stop working on the curbs and the median. So this way we would not have to rip more stuff out if the determination was made between Bernie and the council and Citizen Safety to go ahead and change the design of this to four feet. So instead, we've reallocated those folks to do other work. So that's where we stand now. We're not going to work on those curbs on the median until we take this to Citizen Safety and, but we need to decide this kind of rapidly, otherwise we're going to just, you know, delay and delay. So I just bring that to this meeting, I bring it to Bernie particularly for the Citizen Safety, and maybe we need to convene a special meeting of Citizen Safety to talk through this.
Well, let me, if I could, because you know, I talked about this right before the meeting, I appreciate it, I think it's, it's great. It was a very robust meeting last night, and it was a good exchange. And I think the idea of having a contingency in case a year, five, 10 years down the road, we decide that the bike lane doesn't make sense and we want to go back to two lanes in that area, this gives us the option. And I think that makes, it's a very reasonable, very thoughtful, I think, approach. My, so thank, thank you for that, and thanks to Chris, I know you guys were working on that today. My thinking in terms of the time sensitivity, so work's going to go on on other pieces of this.
Right, correct.
Just not on the curb part.
Right.
I guess, and ask Bernie, I mean, maybe we could even just bounce this idea off to Citizen Safety members like tomorrow, and then get their input and maybe come back to the council, maybe individually, so we can move on this, if, if that's what we're going to do.
Yeah, and I think from a contingency viewpoint, it makes, it makes sense. I think, I don't think, I know that we are confident about the traffic flows and the fact that this will aid traffic, and I think we feel strongly about the pedestrian and vehicle safety.
Absolutely.
That we're adding, the bike safety that we're adding. But I think this gives us a way, or like, it makes people feel calm that there is a potential reversal if, if it, because it's very, this project is different than some of the other projects that we've done.
And also because traffic flows change over time, and so, you know, what might work, you know, in a few months when this is done, may not work in a few years, so this, I think this makes sense. Bernie, did you?
Yeah, so our next Citizen Safety meeting, or my last Citizen Safety meeting.
End of June.
Was scheduled for the end of June.
It's too late.
So I think that we could probably poll the members, send them an email. I know that many of them were in attendance last night. I guess I have a couple of questions, maybe Chris can answer this. So when we filled out the grant and, and accepted the monies for this grant.
Yeah.
Is there a clause in there that we can change the configuration if we so desire? Because that was a topic that kept coming up last night regarding.
Particularly the bike lanes.
If we don't like it, we can change it back. I'd just like to confirm that we have that.
Yeah, that's fine. Chris?
That ability.
Thank you.
To do that.
Good evening Mayor, members of the council. We can make minor changes, de minimis changes. What is being proposed, that Roberta was saying, is a narrowing of the median that would be running from West Ridgewood Avenue around the Garber Square curve down to North Broad Street, from the original proposed design of eight feet that allows for landscaping and lights to a narrower one that basically only permits lights and won't have any landscaping or vegetation. That, to me, is a de minimis change, should not be an issue with DOT.
Okay, and then how about in the event of removing the bike lane, would that be, would you consider that de minimis change, or would you consider that?
If the bike lane were to be deleted before we got our reimbursement from DOT, they may give us a very hard look at the project.
But we have no intent, I mean, there's no intent, I'm sorry Chris, there's no intention here to eliminate the bike lane, we're doing the same design but giving ourselves that added contingency. So the thought, I mean, because I think the strong feeling is that it's safer.
Yeah, I understand that, but last night, when we were having the conversation with the residents, it was mentioned several times that we could eventually take the bike lane away if it didn't work, so I guess just to be on the safe side.
Yeah, I mean, eventually, is a period down the road, it could be a couple of years, or as even Mayor Aronson said, as transportation patterns change, it may be necessary for us to change something. That is accepted by DOT because they know change happens.
Okay.
What, they may have a problem is if we presented this with bike lanes as the project, as part of the project, and then we delete it and present that final project without them. Because they do do, they do a field audit on the work, they examine the project, they measure the ADA access ramps at the sidewalk corners, make sure the slopes are within the federal standards. If the slopes are not correct, they will not reimburse us for our grant.
All right, okay, and just so that I'm clear, and maybe so that the public's clear, if they were to, if we were to remove the bike lane, what percentage do you think of that grant would possibly be withheld?
I don't know at this time.
Okay. The grant's about $146,000, right?
So the grant's 146, so.
Yes.
But again, I know we're not proposing.
We're not even there, I mean.
Yeah, again, and this is just to allow for the possibility a year, two years, whatever down the road, and Chris is telling us that that probably would be understood by DOT.
Yeah, if, yes.
I'm just making sure that it's understood by the residents, because, I mean, we did have a pretty fruitful conversation last night, and it did come up several times that we would possibly eliminate the bike lane, so I just don't want us to get in a bailiwick of.
Again, I feel that if it's several years after the project is complete and a traffic pattern change has occurred, and a traffic pattern change could occur depending how the village develops, how some of the issues before the planning board are resolved, if they are resolved, if they move forward or not. Those are issues that may affect the traffic there.
Okay.
And then DOT is understanding that conditions sometimes change, and changes are then warranted.
Okay, because I, I think that was, that was, and you were there obviously, so that was, the topics of conversation were what if, and what could be changed, that came up several times, so just to, to kind of keep everybody aware of how the changes could occur, how long it could take for the changes to occur, and, and the process going forward.
But that wouldn't be our, again, our recommendation, right?
Okay.
Howard?
I have a question, Chris.
Sure.
If the divide is narrowed from eight feet, what width are you proposing?
We're looking at something from a face a curb, face a curb to face a curb width of around four to possibly four and a half feet. It has to be wide enough to fit the streetlight pole foundation in between the two curbs. Once that's installed, the rest will be backfilled with dense grated aggregate, a soil gravel mix, and then probably we'll either top it with pavers for color distinction, or we might just top it with concrete. We're not going to put in grass because it would be very difficult to maintain. The amount of grass in there wouldn't warrant installing irrigation to keep the grass viable.
And then there'll be no, obviously no trees that are contemplated with the eight-foot strip, and no shrubs of any kind?
No.
No.
The aesthetics, the aesthetics actually, you know, that part of the aesthetics go away with this recommendation.
Right, yeah, so there's an aesthetic, an aesthetic price to be paid for this, and in my own view of the two lanes, as somebody who travels that route more than once every day, at least twice a day, and sometimes a lot more than that, is that the two lanes never functioned as two lanes.
That's right.
Because no one would travel, very rarely would, would two cars travel side by side around that curve. It reduced to one lane in any event, at least that's my, you know, anecdotal, non-expert observation.
Your observations are similar to what many people have seen, I think Roberta's commented, a similar observation. You do see two cars navigating the corner, and it's generally a more aggressive driver, particularly one that might want to pass, car moving slower against the median, going on the right side. Again, that's motor vehicle violation if an officer sees it.
And it helps to calm the traffic when we do it with the, you know, the single, kind of the channeling, right, so.
And my last observation is that several months ago, we had bicyclists here, and we promised to do what we could to enhance their movement through the village and to encourage people to use bicycles and other ways to get to the station. So at least in the short run, I'm glad we're giving the bicycle routing a shot, and hopefully it will remain in the long run. But we can find a way for cars and bicycles to move compatibly, as is required by law, on our, on our state roads and county roads.
A bicycle has the same rights within the public right of way, within the roadway as a motor vehicle does. That also means a bicyclist can be ticketed for motor vehicle violations. As Chief Ward said last night, I don't know if you had left by that time, if a bicyclist runs a red light and a police officer sees it, he has a right to issue a ticket for that offense, as can be, bicycles be cited for speeding. If they're going faster than, say, 25 on a downhill stretch, and an officer observes it, they can be ticketed. If people have been listening to the media lately, New York City has just gotten very aggressive in the Upper West Side, I believe, with what they consider flagrant violations of the motor vehicle statutes by bicyclists. So it's a two-way street.
Literally.
Literally. Fun intense.
Yeah, literally.
So unfortunately, only two council members are allowed to be present at these public meetings, so I tried to stand out in the hall and hear as much of the meeting as possible, but I couldn't catch much of it. I'll probably, I don't even know if you took minutes of it last night.
I have, we have cassette tapes of the meeting, we did run an audio, it's a raw, rough audio if you'd like, you're welcome to listen to it.
So I just have a few quick questions too. Now that the people who are at the meeting are requesting wider roads in the event that they're not, you know, at some time in the future, we may want to change the road structure. What is going to happen to the traffic calming feature, which was and is in every, in every engineer's codebook is, you know, better for, to prevent aggressive driving and, and to not slow down traffic, but actually calm traffic?
We still have, if, again, I'm going to go off the plans from my memory, and I don't know how well you've memorized the plans, hopefully not as much as I have, but at the start of the Garber Square portion where we have the median that we're discussing, we're still going to have a pedestrian refuge island for pedestrians crossing Garber Square from the train station to go to West Ridgewood Avenue. That remains. The roadway that the pedestrian has to cross to get to the refuge island, as Roberta said, is going to be a little bit wider so that in the future, if need be, two lanes can be reestablished or established. The other traffic calming features of the project, the bump out down by North Broad Street, will still be constructed. We will also construct the island in front of the playhouse on Willsey Square that helps do a lane delineation for the two lanes that are designed to make left turns. That island is not an official pedestrian refuge, but we surmise it will be used as such, from people parking at Willsey and going across to the bakery.
I just want to add a point to this, and correct me if I'm wrong, but from my days on the Citizen Safety Committee, it's amazing what you can do with a can of paint.
That's what I was, that's what I was doing.
So where we put the white lines will really calm traffic.
Yeah, we, we may look at edge striping, once the project is done, that is a technique we've used elsewhere in the village. North Monroe, we did that, the edge striping, as part of traffic calming, and it worked quite well. The first job we ever did, W O line striping was on Overbrook, that also had demonstratable success.
But certainly the channelization that we have in the design, you know, calms traffic. Once you go back to those, if you were ever to go back to those two lanes, it wouldn't have the same impact, so.
Great, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
So just to, just to confirm, thank you Chris. So the plan is you guys are going to reach out to Citizen Safety.
Right.
Hopefully within the next 24, however fast you can, and then just come back to us with the.
Within the next two days, I think, you know, we'd like to see this decided upon by middle next week, the latest, otherwise we start, you know, besides the cost of undoing, then we have the issue that we're bumping up against July 4th. We wanted this done by July 4th, which, if, if we start bumping up, it's going to incur overtime.
Okay.
You know, so.
Good, well, thank you, appreciate it. Good stuff, all right. Back to our regularly scheduled program. Motion to suspend work session and convene a special public meeting?
So moved.
Second. Halk.
Yes.
Puccirelli.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
And Aronson.
Yes. Adequate notice to this meeting has been provided by posting on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mail to Ridgewood News, the Record, and by submission to all persons entitled to same as provided by law of a schedule, including the date and time of this meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Halk.
Here.
Councilman Puccirelli.
Here.
Councilman Ritchie is absent. Councilwoman Walsh.
Here.
And Mayor Aronson.
Here. All right, village manager?
Okay.
It's our budget hearing.
It's our budget hearing. Okay, so I guess this is probably the third time we're doing a budget presentation. We changed it up a little this year, and what we did was we presented the in-depth presentations twice before. We did a summary to the council, and then a couple of weeks ago, we did a very detailed presentation at the introduction of the budget. So what we're going to do this evening is really do it more of a summary of, of the budget, so, Mike? Okay, budget summary. So again, operating and capital budgets were done together. We have a $46.2 million operating budget, $2.8 million requested capital budget. Budget has no tax increase. The budget paperwork went to the state, and the state has approved the budget for adoption. Again, and I mentioned this earlier, the overall approach was that we maxed out the anticipated revenue. We utilized 2013 actuals as a guide for expenses, so these two things were kind of a new focus. And we do have some modest investments in capital. Thank you. I hope you can all see this. This is out of the budget newsletter that we sent over the, kind of, last weekend. But, so here's the pie chart, you'll notice a couple of things. You'll notice that if you look at, and this is no surprise, this is true across municipalities, if you look at public safety, public safety makes up about 41% of our budget. What's different here, and we worked with the Finance Advisory Committee on this, and this is the first time we're doing this, is that we included in the costs of the departments, pensions, benefits, and FICA. So we have, in corporate terminology, I guess, we've fully loaded the departments up, right? So before, we used to, we had those things broken out. Now we're trying to really show the, the real cost of running, you know, whether it be public works, parks and rec, police or fire. So I, I think we, we haven't divvied up all of the allocations, but we've divvied up a very large portion, right Janice? Big, all right. So that, that's kind of the message on that slide. Key considerations, and we talked about this, key expenditure considerations. Employee health insurance up 11.8% or $624,000. Debt service year over year increasing by $956,000. Public safety salary increases represent more than half of total salary increases of $900,000 plus. We had, obviously, everybody knows this, substantially higher snow removal costs of $571,000, so we had to make up all these extra costs. We have terminal leave payments for 11 known employees of about $420,000. We did include the purchasing and leasing of police vehicles, badly needed, $100,000. Two new police officers are in here, $480,000, that includes their, their training and their uniforms. We did put aside some money to help out on the Board of Adjustment side so that we could start working on addressing some of the issues in our building department. Mulching is costing us more money this year, particularly the grass piece of it. We did put money in the budget for forensic review of, of our processes and some Six Sigma training to prepare us for the future. Fire department salaries were actually down $161,000 because of retirements and new hires. We also did a nice thing in that we increased funding of the community center. That's almost the total budget, by $19,000, the total budget for the community center is $20,000. So those were the key expense concerns, as I would kind of look at them. Thanks Mike. Revenues, as I said earlier, we maximized anticipated revenues. On our fees and permits, just, a lot of you may know this, but most of the revenue on our fees and permits come from court fees, they're about $379,000. Grading is about $362,000. Sewer use for tax-exempt organizations is $322,000. Ambulance is about $366,000. Cable franchise is about $365,000. Cable franchise is about $344,000. So those are the big items that are sitting in that fees and permit section in the revenue. I think the risk, I think overall, we feel, the leadership team feels pretty comfortable that we're going to make the revenue numbers. The risks here are potentially municipal court fines, particularly parking tickets, because we had less parking enforcement officers the first couple of months of the year. We have the usual grading risk, the weather, and we have some work to do in recycling, where we've done some single streaming, and where actually prices are down. So those are some risks, including a negative impact on fund balance, which I'll talk about in a later slide. On the opportunity side, we have the fact that we increased the side job fees for police, so that will have a full-year impact of. And I guess on the building permit side, we are seeing some more new construction, which yields some greater fees on the building permit side. So those are the opportunities on the revenue side. Thank you. From a challenge perspective, I kind of organized it into three challenges. We do still have unfunded liabilities of $7.1 million. This is sick time, accumulated sick time, vacation time, compensatory time. Right now, against that $7.1 million, we have a reserve of $479,000. Okay, so it's a challenge. The other challenges that we have used, some surplus, and I'm going to take you through the details here, but we've used surplus fund balance, one-time revenues, and trust funds of a total of $4.8 million. And the challenge there, of course, is always replenishing. So if you look at that, if you could see that first, it's a little small. The surplus fund balance, we had a balance of $4.4 million, we're, in fact, utilizing $2.9 million of it, about the same as last year. Remaining surplus is $1.4 million. We do know that we will be getting FEMA money in for $300,000. We know we have another, we're going to have some more monies coming in that will make up the surplus balance. The recycling expenditure fund, we basically wiped out, so that we took $294,000 of that and allocated against budget, against expense, and we took $150,000 of that to offset the tax levy. And of course, because of the snow removal, we actually, we actually took down the entire snow removal trust by $211,000, which, you know, there's nothing left in the snow removal trust. On one-time revenues, we did have FEMA money in. We have some Green Acres money that we're using up, reserved for debt service. We have some deferred charges from our parking utility, and we were able to use those this year. So net-net, when you look at all that stuff, we're probably utilizing about $500,000, well, we are utilizing about $500,000 more of one-time revenues this year than the previous year. So that's a challenge. The budget process, based on actuals, gives us more discipline, but less flexibility. So when I was talking a little bit before about surplus balances, one of the ways that you add to your surplus is you have either lower expenses or you have higher revenue. And since we maxed out revenue and we're really tight on expenses, that component of replenishing surplus is a little riskier than perhaps it has been in the past. Okay? On the capital side, we have a $2.8 million capital budget. Some of the larger items are streets. We're purchasing a salt truck with a plow, $236,000. The police department and the fire department, both, we're purchasing some vehicles and equipment. We're making some improvements to the parks. On the library side, we're investing in some technology and installing a new A V media system. The one thing I'd like to highlight, which I highlighted, I guess, a couple of weeks ago, is paving. And we have a, in the package right now, we have two scenarios for the council to consider. We have the total capital budget scenario, which includes paving. And frankly, because the total capital budget a couple of weeks ago appeared not to be positioned for passage, because you need a 4-1, you need a super majority, as opposed to just a majority, we made a decision to also break out paving into its own resolution, its own ordinance, with the intent of getting paving done this year. So you should all know, I think a lot of you do know, that right now, as we speak, we're paving 2013 capital. This is from last year, the capital that we're using to pave. And I think it's our intent, and I think we all agree, that it would be great to do 2014 capital in 2014. We really, pursuant to your comment, we do really need to get this paving done. So in an attempt to maybe salvage the paving part of this, because the longer we wait with paving, the less likely it's going to be to get done, because we have to go out for bids and stuff, we actually put a different proposal in here to treat paving potentially separately, as a separate, as a separate issue. I do, I feel firmly that this is a real, it's a meat and potatoes, as I call it, it's a meat and potatoes issue. So, okay, next slide. Okay, so my, this is your tax dollar. We are not in the middle. So you'll see that 25% of your tax dollar is the municipality, 65% of your tax dollar is the schools. And this is an approximate, I don't, we don't have the county number yet, but about 10% of the tax dollar goes to county. So with this budget that's being spoken about tonight, an average home will see a tax of $39.59, a decrease of $5. So it's a flat, zero tax increase for the second year in a row. So just to end on a little bit of a high note, I think, we think, the leadership team thinks that there are opportunities. We'll be exploring different ways of delivering services, whether it be collaboration with others, collaboration with the county, whether it be insourcing or outsourcing, whether it be shared services arrangements, we'll be looking at that. And obviously, that has a lead time. So we probably would not see a full year, not even close to a full-year impact this year, but, you know, we're in the planning stages of this. There are modest improvements, investments in capital and human resource development and operational reviews, including some use of Six Sigma, as well as some more emphasis on people and people development. And we also have the opportunity with the expiration of four collective bargaining agreements, the fire at the end of 2014, and the police at the end of 2015. So I would say those are our opportunities going forward. And that was my quick summary.
Well, once again, I think that was actually your fourth presentation.
Yeah, I think it was, too.
But, but thank you for that. It was an excellent presentation, as were the first three. And, yeah, very, very helpful for us, very helpful, I'm sure, for the public. At this point, we can have some council comments, and then we'll open it up to the public for any comments or questions. I don't know if anyone wants to speak first? Albert?
I'd just like to make a statement about the budget. In 2012, I distributed a pamphlet asking people of Ridgewood to vote for me, because I said, among other things, I wanted to see Ridgewood with a government that is fiscally responsible. For me, it is not responsible to assume, year after year, that our budget will increase, and the increase is okay, so long as it is more or less around the increase in the CPI. This is a lazy approach to budgeting. This year and last year, with the help of our employees and the Financial Advisory Committee, we looked long and hard at every budget line, and we found places to save. While not quite zero-based budgeting, it is almost so. We've also raised awareness that the level of salary and benefit increases year-on-year has one of two outcomes. We can just pass along these increases to overburden taxpayers, or we can find ways to do things differently. There's a real sense now on everybody's part that structural change is how we operate, in how we operate, plus the opportunities presented by the expiration of four collective bargaining agreements for uniform services will make future tax increases no longer inevitable. Instead, they will be targeted to areas that have long been neglected, such as capital expenditures. So I'm proud to vote for this budget, and just as importantly, I look forward to addressing the 2015 budget very soon. I'm mindful that this is May 28th, and we're talking about a budget for a year that is almost halfway behind us. Budgeting into the rearview mirror, in my mind, makes no sense. It's not the way it's done in the real world and business. Why we're doing a budget now, when half the year is over, is, it's an anomaly of government. I don't understand it, frankly. So it'd be nice to do a prospective budget for a change for 2015, before 2015.
Thank you, Albert. Bernie?
Okay. Yeah, thank you for that comment, too, because it's very true. It's supposed to be a guidepost that you use to make decisions in your departments, and you're not, you know, it's not, you can't possibly introduce the budget halfway through the year and expect to use that as a guideline. I also am voting for the 0% increase with a heavy heart, because I know what a burden it places on everyone, to think, you know, as hard as possible how we can reinvent the wheel, how we can operate more efficiently, and really challenge ourselves. Ridgewood is extraordinary, because we do provide layers and layers of services and comforts for the residents. It's, we are different, because we provide that. And I think sometimes everyone forgets that people do move here for those services. So we don't, I don't want to take away any services. What I want to take away are inefficiencies. And all that while being cognizant of the fact that New Jersey and Bergen County are ranked the highest in the entire country for property tax values. And people in Bergen County, the average resident of Bergen County in 2013 was paying 8.3% of their yearly income on property taxes. So we really are all in a position where we have to squeeze this lemon and come up with some lemonade, and I know it's painful, but I'm proud that we aren't afraid to do it. That's our job as leaders of the community, is to ask those questions and be leaders.
Mayor, if I may. Councilmember, she could not be here. He asked me if I would read a statement that he wrote. Is that acceptable?
Sure, did you want to go first, or?
No, she can read it.
Okay.
Is that okay? Okay, it says, this is on his letterhead, "Due to previously scheduled obligations, I am unable to be present at tonight's council meeting. I felt it important to put my thoughts and statement on the record with regard to the operating and capital budgets. With regard to the capital budgets for the parking and water utilities, I would urge the council to pass these budgets. Both of these entities are self-funding authorities, and the capital requests are appropriate. The municipal operating budgets and capital budgets, in my opinion, do not meet the criteria for prudent, long-term fiscal planning. The substantial increase in our debt service payments of approximately $1 million, as well as drawing down most of the available reserve funds, is counterproductive to sound financial planning. A 0% municipal tax increase eliminates any safeguards for unanticipated unfunded events, such as storm recovery or catastrophic failure of any village infrastructure. For these reasons, in absentia, I would cast no votes for the proposed budget. Respectfully submitted, Thomas M. Ritchie, Councilman, Village of Ridgewood." I did indicate to Councilman Ritchie, obviously, he cannot vote, no in absentia, that today his vote would be absent, but he did want this to go on the record. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Heather, appreciate it. Bernie?
Thanks. So we had a kumbaya moment last night. The mayor and I agreed on pretty much everything that was said. That's not going to happen tonight. But I just figured I'd kind of add a little levity to the evening. So last week, I went to Allendale to have some ice cream, and I walked in, and there was a woman sitting at the table with this. And I walked past, and I stopped, and then I kind of backed up, because I said, you know, those pie charts look familiar. So I went over and introduced myself. It turned out, it was a resident of Ridgewood, a lifelong resident of Ridgewood, whose children have grown up here, moved out. And I said to her, "I noticed you're reading our budget document in the ice cream store." And she said, "Because I'm really worried about what's going on in Ridgewood. I'm really worried that the services are going down, and I'm really reading this to see if I understand it." So, of course, I sat down, I had a conversation with her, and, you know, she, she mentioned a lot of things that I had already been thinking. So at least one village resident agreed with me, let's put it that way. You know, Roberta was hired a few months ago. We were talking about how many weeks it is, and, you know, and I think that over the past several weeks, I've appreciated all of the work she's done for Ridgewood, and I know that she's really putting her heart and soul into this. I know that just in the past few days, she's really put a lot of time in, and maybe she didn't necessarily sign on for that, but you're in it, so. So, you know, in having conversations and talking about different things that have gone in Ridgewood, and things that could possibly go on in Ridgewood, listening to the, you know, the budget summary again tonight, a couple of words are really sticking out. So recycling, we used the word wiped out. Snow removal trust, empty. Remaining surplus, 1.4, with an unfunded liability of $7.1 million against a reserve of the $479. So there are a lot of things that are in this, in this proposal, that really give me pause. And I think I've said that all along, that a balanced budget doesn't necessarily mean a zero tax increase. A balanced budget means that you're, you're trying to balance your obligations and make sure that you're planning, and you talked about Six Sigma, and one of the big things with Six Sigma is DMEIC, that it's kind of an abbreviation for how you do Six Sigma planning. I believe we're right in the middle. I believe that you're in the middle, in the management part of it. And I think that we're still, you know, 40% on the other side still, that we, that there's a lot of things that need to be implemented, and a lot of things that you have plans for, but that really give you absolutely no flexibility in this budget. There's no flexibility for her to implement, I believe, a lot of the plans that you have, and I know that she does have a lot of plans, and then move the budget forward. You know, I'm a numbers person, I always say that. So I took all of the council, and I took Roberta's current assessments on our property. And if we did the 1% increase, as she initially had suggested, and I don't know if you guys want me to read down the list, Mayor Aronson's taxes would go up $30 this year, Councilwoman Hauck would go up $77, Deputy Mayor Puccirelli's would go up $51, Councilman Ritchie's would go up $26, mine would go up 42, and Roberta's would go up 58. So the highest one would be about $6 a month, which was Glenn, she would be the winner. And the lowest would be Councilman Ritchie, with a $2 increase monthly, which many of us frequent coffee shops and know that it costs more than $2 to get a coffee every day. So, you know, I support the initial plan of 1% that you had. I think that you have a brilliant future here with the plans that you have. So I think that, you know, I'm going to stick with my, with my one no vote on the budget.
Great, thank you. So, you know, I was thinking, when Albert was talking, you know, when this council was reorganized two years ago, we talked a lot about the need to recognize the new normal. And what we meant by that is that, in the context of our town, you know, Ridgewood residents, the tax burden on Ridgewood residents was too great. And you had a lot of folks that live in this town, and we know them, that are either making less money than they were five years ago, or they're underemployed, or something, they've been impacted. And we recognize that there was a need for some tax relief, that in past years, I mean, if you look at this wonderful budget newsletter, you know, there were years when the tax burden was 7%, 8% increase. We needed to get away with that. We recognized that there was not just a new normal, but that we recognized the need to express our commitment and our determination to do something about it. And that expression, that first, that determination first expressed itself with the formation of our Financial Tiger Team. And it was a new concept, but we got, I think, about 14 village residents, and we brought them together, folks that were in finance, folks that own their own businesses, different walks of life, come together, and so look at our budget, tell us, give us some ideas, raise some questions, help us think outside the box, because we need to do government differently. And they came forward with a report, somewhat compelling report, but definitely worth reading, and definitely worth every, every moment of time that was spent putting it together. From that, our determination expressed itself in the formation of a Financial Advisory Committee. It expressed itself in this, this idea that we shouldn't wait till February or March for the council to be engaged in the the council to be engaged in the budget process, that we need to start the day after, to Albert's point, the day after we adopt the current budget. It expressed itself in many ways. It expressed itself, frankly, in the hiring of a village manager who came from the private sector, who could help us and bring different way of thinking about budgets and management and government, and personnel, and human resources, you know, different way to look at government. And so, I'm really excited, because this is the second year in a row we will be adopting a budget that does not increase the municipal taxes on Ridgewood residents. And that might in fact be historical, but even more important than that, it not only helps reign in government, but it really sort of sets the way for the future, because we can't do this every year, right? But when we can, we should, and that's what we're doing this year. And we are thinking differently about government. We are doing government differently. And we've engaged, again, a lot of our residents, some of our members of the Financial Advisory Committee are here. You know, this is what it's all about, and we're really making some headway here. I'm really proud of all the work everyone's doing, whether we agree to disagree on the budget, we're all involved in this process, we're all making a difference. And I just want to say thank you, and I'm really excited about voting on this budget tonight. So with that, we can now open it up to public comment. Anyone, feel free to come to the podium if you have a question, comment about the budget.
I just want to state, this is a public hearing on the 2014 Ridgewood Municipal Budget.
Good evening, Boyd Loving, 342 South Irving Street. Councilwoman Howe spoke about getting rid of inefficiencies, and the manager spoke about revenue opportunities, spoke about revenue in general. I just have some concerns with respect to getting rid of some of those inefficiencies in light of the fact that you're about to, it looks like, approve a 0% tax increase. Some of my family lives in Hoboken, and when I go to Hoboken, I see that they are currently using the automated summonses. Automated summons issuing, automated summonses for parking enforcement and police. Last year, Hoboken collected $1 million more in parking fines than they did the previous year. I know that we have discussed the automated summons issuance in Ridgewood for years, and we are not there yet, and the manager spoke of the fact that earlier this year, we were down on parking enforcement agents. I'm wondering, if we get this automated summons process going, can we expect that we are going to be seeing more revenue generated from summonses? And more importantly, is there enough money in the budget with a 0% tax increase to implement the automated summons system?
In the more detailed presentation that I did a couple of weeks ago, we didn't mention specifically e-ticket. Jackie's back there, and I would just ask her maybe to comment. We were very close, so we have the money put aside in the budget to implement it. And I'd just like her to comment on the timeframe, if we can.
Could somebody comment on, are there any projections as to whether that's going to increase revenue when e-tickets?
She'll be able to do that.
Welcome.
We are hoping within the next few months. The holdup right now is, we are working with a new vendor, and there's a holdup on the administrative courts side, with the state responding back to what they need. Once it is implemented, and we are all looking forward to this, it should increase the revenue because of how much more ease it will be to generate the summons, and how much easier it will be for the court personnel to properly read the summons. As we know, not everybody has really good handwriting, so there are times where the right name or the right license plate can't be read, and then the ticket gets junked. So this will prevent a lot of the errors from occurring, so we do anticipate a higher revenue.
And I think, to your point, I think what we do need to do is, and I have not looked at this yet, but I do think we should put a cost benefit analysis together and really understand, from a metric standpoint, what we really gain, but, yeah.
Okay, thanks very much. Again, a concern that there's enough money in the budget available to get this going, because as I said, Hoboken's slightly different from us in terms of traffic volumes and things, but still 1 million more than the previous year, you know, really is an eye-opener. The other comment question I had, the manager mentioned single-stream recycling. And I see Mr. Maritz is here, so perhaps he can answer some questions about this. Many years ago, I noticed that when the sanitation trucks drove down the street and collected recycled material, the sanitation trucks were compartmentalized, and high-quality paper went in one side, newspapers went in another. Now, of course, when they pick up materials from the curb, it's single-stream as far as paper is concerned, and I understand that we get less money when that happens. If you go over to the recycling center, it's still segregated, and they get more money. So I'm wondering, how much money are we losing because we stopped collecting on the street in a segregated fashion? And why can't we get back to that and collect more money? Or does it cost us more, and is that why we're no longer doing it?
So Frank wants to come up to the mic.
Thank you, Boyd. Actually, we don't lose any money, because our fibers, we get paid for high-quality fibers based on how, the high quality that we do get down at the yard at our recycling center. So we get paid for number eight fibers all the time, and that's why we don't separate them, that's why we can combine them now.
So there's no loss at all?
No.
Okay.
Single-stream, that's another story, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
Any other questions or comments? Good evening.
Good evening, Leonard Eisen, 762 Upper Boulevard. I don't understand the comments about, there's no increase in the budget. This is only the 25% of the money that's being collected. I mean, we have to talk about the school budget, which is like 1.9%, which is going to increase our taxes. So I don't understand the confusion here.
Sure, no, it's a good point. Actually, when the village manager showed that, sort of, your dollar, she pointed out that 65% of that was the school budget.
Correct.
Right, so the 25%, the municipal part, we're not raising taxes on.
But what I didn't point out, and Leonard's correct, I didn't point out that that 25, that percent reflects a 1.9%, a 1.8% increase in the school taxes. So that's true.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, will the clerk please read the title of the 2014 budget?
Actually, we're down to closing the public hearing.
Oh, yeah, that's where we are.
Okay.
I'm so excited about this. I move the public hearing on the 2014 budget be closed.
Second.
Howe?
Yes.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Walsh?
To close the hearing? To close the hearing.
And Aronson.
You want to just keep talking?
That's okay.
That was tricky.
That's okay. Okay, now we have the resolutions. Whereas the local parking utility budget for the year 2014 was approved on the 23rd day of April 2014, and whereas the public hearing on said budget has been held as advertised, and whereas it is desired to amend said approved budget, now therefore be resolved by the Council of the Village of Ridgewood in the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, that the following amendments to the approved budget of 2014 be made. Schedule A, anticipated revenues, dedicated revenues from parking utilities, sheet 34, parking meter fees, from $992,913.55 to $998,279.32. Total parking utility revenues from $994,413.55 to $999,779.32. Parking utility appropriations, deferred charges, deficit prior year from 0 to $5,365.77. Total parking utility appropriations from $994,413.55 to $999,779.32. Be further resolved that 235 copies of this resolution be filed forthwith with the Director of the Division of Local Government Services for approval. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Howe?
Yes.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Aronson?
Yes.
Okay, now, the adoption. Be resolved by the Village Council of the Village of Ridgewood, County of Bergen, that the budget here and before set forth is hereby adopted and shall constitute an appropriation for the purposes stated of the sums therein set forth as appropriations and authorization of the amount of $30,954,695.36 for municipal purposes, $284,000 for open space recreation, farmland, and historic preservation trust fund levy, and $2,295.62 for maintenance of the free public library. Summary of revenues, general revenue surplus anticipated $2,982,000. Misalainenous revenues anticipated $9,489,211.79. Receipts from delinquent taxes, $800,000. Minimum library tax, $2,295.62. Amount to be raised by taxation for municipal purposes, $30,954,695.36 for total revenues of $46,226,202.77. Summary of appropriations, general appropriations within caps, operations including contingent, Deferred charges and statutory expenditures excluded from caps, operations, total operations excluded from caps, is $3,410,095.31. Capital improvements, $140,000. Municipal debt service, $4,799,048.09. Deferred charges municipal, $102,708. And reserve for uncollected taxes, $1,375,648.77. For total appropriations, $46,226,202.77. Now therefore be resolved that it is hereby certified that the within budget is a true copy of the budget finally adopted by resolution of the governing body on the 28th day of May 2014. Is further certified that each item of revenue and appropriation is set forth in the same amount and by the same title as appeared in the 2014 approved budget and all amendments thereto, if any, which have been previously approved by the Director of Local Government Services. May I have a motion? This is to adopt the budget.
Can you read that again?
No.
I'll make, I'll move to adopt the budget.
I'll second.
Okay. Howe?
Yes.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Walsh?
No.
And Aronson?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Now moving on to ordinances?
Yes.
Contender of public hearing, general capital bond ordinance, I move the clerk read ordinance 3413 by title on third reading, and that the public hearing thereon be continued.
Second.
The second is?
Albert.
Okay. Howe?
Yes.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Aronson?
Yes, will the clerk please read the title of ordinance 3413?
A bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements in and by the Village of Ridgewood in the County of Bergen, New Jersey, appropriating $2,836,500 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $2,700,000 bonds or notes to the village to finance part of the costs thereof.
The public hearing on ordinance 3413 was continued from the May public meeting because the budget had to be adopted prior to the adoption of this ordinance to provide for the down payment. The public hearing is now continued, and anyone wishing to speak on this ordinance may do so at this time. Anybody who'd like to speak?
This ordinance was the original introduced ordinance for the general capital, which included everything, including paving.
All right, did I move the pub, I'm sorry?
Which number is this?
3413.
3413.
This is the total cap, this is all capital?
All capital.
That's all capital, okay.
I move the public hearing be closed?
Second.
Howe?
Yes.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Aronson?
Yes.
Yes. I move that ordinance 34, oh, so it's...
That was just to close it.
Just to close it.
I was hoping for paving.
Go ahead.
I move that ordinance 3413 be adopted on third reading and final publication as required by law.
Second.
Okay. Howe?
Yes.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Walsh?
No.
And Aronson?
Yes, came close. All right. I move the clerk read ordinance 3414 by title on third reading, and that the public hearing thereon be opened.
Second.
Howe?
Yes.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Aronson?
Yes, will the clerk please read the title of ordinance 3414?
Okay, hold on one sec. Bond ordinance providing for various water utility improvements in and by the Village of Ridgewood in the County of Bergen, New Jersey, appropriating $2,126,500 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $2 million bonds or notes to the village to finance part of the costs thereof.
The public hearing on ordinance 3414 was continued from the May public meeting because the budget had to be adopted prior to the adoption of the ordinance to provide for the down payment. Public hearing is now continued, and anyone wishing to speak on this ordinance may do so at this time.
And again, this is completely for the water utility improvements.
All right, I move the public hearing be closed?
Second.
Howe?
Yes.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Aronson?
Yes.
I move that ordinance 3414 be adopted on third reading and final publication as required by law.
Second.
Howe?
Yes.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Aronson?
Yes.
I move the clerk read ordinance 3415 by title on third reading, and that the public hearing thereon be opened.
Second.
Howe?
Yes.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Aronson?
Yes, will the clerk please read the title of ordinance 3415?
A bond ordinance providing for improvements to the parking utility in and by the Village of Ridgewood in the County of Bergen, New Jersey, appropriating $127,200 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $100,000 bonds or notes to the village to finance part of the costs thereof.
Public hearing on ordinance 3415 was continued from the May public meeting because the budget had to be adopted prior to the adoption of this ordinance to provide for the down payment. Public hearing is now continued, and anyone wishing to speak on this ordinance may do so at this time.
And again, this is solely for improvements to the parking utility.
Good evening, Boyd Loving, 342 South Irving Street. I had a question about this ordinance during the last hearing, and the manager, somebody else kindly pointed out that the specifics I requested were in 3A, so I've got a copy of 3A here now, but I still have some concerns about this, and that's why I'm at the microphone Section 3A indicates that the portion of the money is going to be used for multi-space parking meter units, and the Chestnut Street multi-space meter unit. So I guess my first question is, besides Chestnut Street, what are the other units that are being purchased here? And my concern about Chestnut Street is that several months ago, Mr. Rudichausser stood here before you, when there was some discussion about the multi-space meters that were going to be going into the park and ride, or proposed for the park and ride, and a question came up about the multi-space meter unit at Chestnut Street, and Mr. Rudichausser indicated that it was, quote, "a lemon," unquote. My concern is that I don't know exactly how much money taxpayers are going to be asked to spend on that unit. But if that unit has never worked right, and I have had an Oprah, and I have found out that there have been multiple, multiple instances where reports have surfaced where the unit didn't work right, tickets, summonses had to be voided because the parking enforcement agents weren't told that the unit wasn't working, and people got tickets, it's been a disaster over there. You've had revenue that's been uncollected. Why should I, as a taxpayer, have to pay to replace that unit? Why don't we call the manufacturer and say, "The thing has never worked, we're not paying it, we want a new one," or you have an attorney on staff, have your attorney sue the manufacturer for all the money that we've lost, and all the aggravation is going taxpayers. I am livid that we are going to spend money to replace something that's never worked without going after the manufacturer of that unit. The thing, as Mr. Rudichausser pointed out, is a lemon. Why should we spend money to replace it? And what are the other units that we're paying for?
Yeah, I appreciate what you're saying. My thought on this particular capital request, it's really broad, and if you look at 3A, it's broader than any of the other 3As and any of the other capital requests. And I think there was a reason for that, and the reason is, and we do owe a proposal at some point, we're going to step back and look at the parking meters in general as we do that process, forensic process, and so we have not made any decisions as to what we're currently, what we're going to be doing. We know we will be making a recommendation, and we started brainstorming it, but I don't have it yet. Having said that, I'm not sure about the second part of your question, and I do ask Chris to come up on the manufacturer, Chris, and the question that Boyd has relative to can we get funds back from the manufacturer? But in general, we're going to come back with a proposal on parking meters, and then this capital was supported.
Before Mr. Rudichausser speaks, I appreciate his expertise in this matter, I still say that that is a decision, though, that should rest with the attorney as to whether we can get any money back, and not with Mr. Rudichausser.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just wanted to hear, I wanted to hear Chris's view on it, but... Yeah, yeah, no, I just wanted to hear, I wanted to hear Chris's view on it, but, uh...
And just so everybody knows, normally we discuss...
You can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Normally we discuss potential litigation in closed session. So without getting into the legal aspects of it and talking contractual obligations, maybe Chris can just give us a background with regard to the manufactured item that we're talking about.
And then we could take it offline, okay?
Uh, the, good evening, Mayor and Council. The multi-space unit at Chestnut Street is manufactured by Matrix. We purchased it, I think, about six, seven years ago. Uh, I don't believe there's any existing warranties left on it. I know we have to pay for parts and service when we do request them from the manufacturer. As for litigation, that would be the hands of Mr. Rogers, the village attorney.
Okay, so we'll take that, we'll take that offline.
Great, thank you, Chris.
Thank, thank you.
And, and the, the last comment I'd like to make about the multi-space meters, and I believe I've made this before, is that I am dead set against a situation like we've got at Chestnut Street where you've got one unit. When the unit breaks, you can't collect any money and it frustrates patrons. If you go over to the train station and see what New Jersey Transit did with respect to their automated ticket dispensing units, there, there's more than one. So if one goes out, patrons are still, can be served by the other one. Uh, I know that Mr. Rudichausser's initial proposal was to put one multi-space unit out at the park and ride, uh, and that's when I came up and spoke vehemently against that. That is a situation where everybody's basically catching the same bus, and if everybody's rushing to one unit, there's going to be a queue. So, Roberta, when you start planning how this money's going to be spent, if you just please keep that in mind, that one is not a good plan.
Yeah, because there's no backup, yeah.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Boyd. Any other questions or comments? All right. I move the public hearing be closed?
Second.
Howk?
Yes.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Aronson?
Yes.
I'll move that, uh, ordinance thirty-four fifteen be adopted on the third reading and final publication as required by law.
Second.
Howk?
Yes.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Aronson?
Yes. I move the clerk read ordinance thirty-four nineteen by title on second reading and that the public hearing thereon be opened.
Second.
Howk?
Yes.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Aronson?
Yes. Will the clerk please read the title of ordinance thirty-four nineteen?
A bond ordinance providing for various road improvements in and by the village of Ridgewood in the county of Bergen, New Jersey, appropriating one million, five hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of one million, three hundred and thirty thousand dollar bonds or notes of the village to finance part of the cost thereof. And again, this is for paving only.
Ordinance thirty-four nineteen was introduced at the May public meeting in order to provide funding for the paving budget. The public hearing is now open. Any questions, comments?
I have a question.
Should we close the public hearing first, or?
Yeah, if no one from the public wants to speak.
I move the public hearing be closed?
Second.
Howk?
Yes.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Aronson?
Yes. Did you want to?
Yep, I got a question. So, to be clear about the two thir, two thousand and thirteen paving, the two thousand and thirteen paving had a schedule and how much was paved of that schedule?
My, my understanding is, and Chris, maybe you can help me here, the two thousand and thirteen capital that was approved late in two thousand and thirteen, I think it was approved in October, I think that portion is the one that's been rolled over into two thousand and fourteen. Now, I'm not sure if it's the whole hundred percent, Chris, um, or it's eighty percent, but certainly South Vandeen.
Um, the paving work that's going on right now is two thousand and thirteen capital. It has a two thousand and thirteen NJDOT grant and a two thousand and twelve NJDOT grant as components of it. Those are the two projects that are currently under construction right now.
Is it anticipated that we're going to get a two thousand and fourteen NJDOT grant?
Yes, we did.
We just did for North Vandeen.
That's North Vandeen.
So we got it for North Vandeen, so...
Hundred forty-nine thousand, which we added to the capital rather than net it.
So if this is, if this is approved, how much paving will be left?
How much paving will be left in the village?
Yeah, every year, how much, you know, of your list, you know how you sent, you gave us that, that, uh, that chart? So, so of that chart you gave us?
Of that chart?
This two thousand and fourteen?
I don't know, because we haven't, I'd have to look at the price, uh, the estimated costs for each street. You know, each street has different work that needs to be done, whether it's an ADA, curb RAM, an apron to be fixed, curbing to be fixed, subgrade repairs. We have all those itemized in a detailed sheet, I don't have those numbers committed to memory.
So...
We'll make, we'll make a significant dent.
Give us a estimate of the percentage of the paving.
Saying it'll make a significant dent.
I think we'll make a significant dent in our current list, once that list is done, fixed, or repaved.
Our two thousand and thirteen list.
Two thousand and thirteen, or any paving list we have, we're always looking to see what streets are in poor condition, uh, according to our rating system, and then they move on to the list. We use several methods, we use our rating system for the streets, we use complaints and information from our street division, and also from residents, you know, residents will call up and say, listen, my street is in poor shape, we'll go out and take a look at it to see if it's changed dramatically since the last time we rated the street. Sometimes it has. Uh, about eight years ago, we lost a street in a flash flood, so we had to do an emergency repair. Actually, it's over there where Roberta lives.
And I wasn't village manager yet.
So from my, my perspective, you know, whether we're talking about one additional street, or ten, or thirty additional streets, I mean, this is arguably one of the most important issues we deal with as a council, because, you know, street repaving really has both public safety and quality of life implications. We know that, we talked to the residents, we're around town, we know that the streets need to be paved, so I think this is one of the most important votes we have, and I think we should, I hope we, we can go forward with it.
And this is probably, I think this is the biggest paving budget we've had in...
I think easily in ten years.
Easily in ten years, and, and we did add, as opposed to what was done in the past, which was netting the grants down, we actually added the grant to it, which is why it's at one million, five four nine, and not where it was before. Right, and, and I think I expressed at the last meeting and, and even the meeting before, that my trepidation is that you had a capital budget and you started to pull things out, just this one thing? Right, well, this is one big thing. Um, and, and in terms of public safety, you know, before I came to the meeting, I, I read a couple of different articles from the past twelve months of other public safety things, the snow. I mean, the snow removal was a big factor, and our budget has, is empty, I think that was the word, or had forty thousand dollars, so we don't even have really enough for one, one event.
We had it on the expense side and I left it out of this, uh, presentation, it was on the previous one, we added forty thousand dollars, um, for the fall, and that would cover one.
One event.
One event, right, in the fall.
Right, so, so, I mean, that was, you know, the, I guess it's the process of, you know, obviously we all know that the streets need to be paved and, and it is a big factor, but it's not the only public safety issue. We've got the leaves that have remained, we had the snow that remained, we ran out of salt, we had, how many, I mean, maybe the captain can tell us how many accidents we had that day when the whole village was a sheet of ice. I mean, cars were crashing into each other, just getting, you know, going a couple of blocks, so, you know, that was my, um, my concern with, with approving just the piece of the budget.
See, the problem is, voting against the, the paving budget doesn't help any of those issues you just addressed. In fact, it could arguably exacerbate the problems that we have. And just to be clear, the only reason paving was pulled out as the capital budget is because you voted against the capital budget, and so we can't move forward. So what, what the village manager did, and I think very wisely, uh, is pulled out what she thinks is the most important, which has the greatest public safety imperative in the capital budget that needs to be funded as soon as possible, there's a time sensitivity to this, because if we wait and if we do this with the next council, that just delays the paving, and that means people's roads get paved later and later. And so the idea was, and again, I think, I commend her for this, pulling this out, because even if you can't support the whole capital budget, the hope is that you would be able to support this and we could go forward and pave the roads.
Right, exactly, um, but, again, going back to having to pull something out, uh, are you confident, are all of you confident, that we're not going to have any more leaves in the street and that we're not going to have any, any snow issues that are going to cause a problem with the, with the capital? I don't think, I don't think any of us has a crystal ball.
Well, let me answer the question, I'm interested in getting the streets paved, and that's what this is about. I, I don't know why I would be talking about snow and leaves unless we want to revisit the entire capital budget, uh, which, again, requires four votes, and we, we don't seem to have four votes. So let's at least get the streets paved, and if we have to deal with every problem one at a time until the new council's in place, let's do it that way. But I don't see any advantage to postponing paving the streets just to make a point that you didn't like the capital budget. I, I really don't understand what you're trying to achieve by not going forward with this.
Okay, so we have the two new council members sitting in the audience, so you're making the assumption they're going to vote yes?
I'm not assuming anything, but we'll have to present it to the new council if you continue to vote against it, because sooner or later the roads have to be paved and we'll be back to, you know, we'll be back to riding horse and buggies on dirt roads.
Okay. Um, my concern with pulling out pieces of the capital budget is that you're taking out one thing and there's still all of these other things that are unbalanced, in my opinion. And I think that's why, when I talked about the regular budget, that you can say that you have zero here, but you're completely unbalanced. You are not a balanced budget, my opinion, and, you know, the paving, you could pull it out, she could have pulled out snow removal and, and put snow removal there.
That's an operational, that's an operational, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think there's...
I mean, you're, you're mixing, so the operations budget, and I understand you have concerns about the operations budget, but it seems, again, as we discussed last time, that you're holding street paving hostage to your preference for a tax increase, and...
I wouldn't use the term hostage, because hostage indicates that it's irrational. I'm trying to make a, a rational, uh, judgment on the entire budget. So a piece was pulled out and, you know, whether it's, it's all of our opinion that, I mean, I think it's everybody's opinion that we need the paving done, I'm trying to make the point that I feel the general, the, the overall budget is not correct, so...
And I appreciate...
Whether I approve or, 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 you know, disapprove it, again, it's one vote, but I'm trying to make the point that it's just not a good practice.
And your point, and I completely respect your, your, your right to make that point, and you made that point, it's, it's noted, but it's going beyond making a point, and now you're actually preventing the paving from happening, so it's going beyond making a point.
I didn't vote yet.
Well, if you vote against it, I mean, you voted against introducing it, so the assumption is...
Perhaps, but I, I think that...
Why don't we, why don't we call the question?
Let's call the question, but I, I think that...
I think, you know, the point's been made, if we call the question, we'll know whether she's voting for it or against it. Well, maybe we'll get a road paved.
Okay, so I need a motion to adopt it?
So moved.
So you've moved to adopt ordinance thirty-four nineteen on second reading and final publication as required by law?
So moved.
Okay, so then I need a second?
I second the motion.
Okay. Howk?
Yes.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Aronson?
Yes, congratulations.
Don't be too happy, no. Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, so, now we motion to adjourn the special public meeting and reconvene the work session?
No, thirty-four twenty. Oh, yeah, because it, thirty-four twenty.
Do we have to do one more?
Thirty-four twenty.
See, I'm just as excited as Roberta is at this moment, so... I move the clerk read ordinance thirty-four twenty by title on second reading and that the public hearing thereon be opened.
Second.
Howk?
Yes.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Aronson?
Yes. Will the clerk please read the title of ordinance thirty-four twenty?
A bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements in and by the village of Ridgewood in the county of Bergen, New Jersey, appropriating one million, three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of one million, two hundred and ninety thousand dollar bonds or notes of the village to finance part of the cost thereof.
Ordinance thirty-four twenty was introduced at the May public meeting in order to provide funding for the general capital budget, which does not include funding for paving. The public hearing is now open. I move that the public hearing be closed?
Second.
Howk?
Yes.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Aronson?
Yes.
I move that ordinance thirty-four twenty be adopted on second reading and final publication as required by law.
Second.
Howk?
Yes.
Puccirelli?
Yes.
Walsh?
No.
And Aronson?
Yes.
Okay, now...
And what is that note for? Do you want to explain why you voted no?
I think I explained it.
Okay. Uh, motion to adjourn special public meeting and reconvene the work session?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
All right, let's move on to the discussion items.
Okay. Okay, discussion item, uh, A1, um, this is the request Bergen County to restore, restore open space tax. I am looking for Ralph Curry or Ellie Gruber, and I'm not sure I see them. Okay, Tom Ritchie asked me to call them up to, uh, talk through this, but this is basically, uh, the Open Space Committee has prepared a letter, I guess they're looking for a, a resolution at some point to, uh, urge the, um, county executive and freeholders to fully fund the Bergen County Open Space Trust Fund.
Uh, unless anyone has any comments about it, maybe we should wait for Councilwoman Unless anyone has any comments about it, maybe we should wait for Councilman Ritchie, because this was his issue.
Yeah.
I'll make a general comment.
Oh, okay.
Sure, please.
You know, when I did my little cheat sheet here, I put a 1% increase in, just for fun, for the village, for open space, and it would basically increase our taxes, Mayor Aronson's by a quarter annually, and the highest was Councilwoman Howk with $1.41 annually for our own open space.
This is for open space, right?
For our own open space, so-
Do you support an increase in the open space tax?
I would definitely support an increase.
But this is at the, but Bernie, this is at the county level.
It's for the county, I'm just saying, I'm giving you, you know, in terms of dollars and cents of how individuals in the municipality would be impacted, it would be, you know, a buck a year, maybe, not even that much.
Okay, all right. 982, this is to award a contract for landscaping services. Eight bid proposals were picked up. We received four bids. This is for the water utility, and we received four bids, and we're recommending the lowest bidder. We're recommending the lowest bidder.
Any comments, questions? All right. Lightning.
Should I go on?
Yeah, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. 983, this is to award the contract for lighting, for the lightning detection system. This is a shared cost with the Board of Education. This will add nine locations in the village, and that will mean that every field has a lightning detection system in it. Our share of the cost is $25,000. The Board of Ed's share of the cost is $43,875.
Any questions, comments? All right.
Okay, the next one is a policy, is a policy one. This is the requalification for the community development block grants, so this is block grant program, so this is a resolution to reauthorize inclusion in this HUD program. Just to let you know what we've gotten out of this program over the years, we provided curb cuts throughout the CBD and residential neighborhoods. We had the elevator at Village Hall, automated door openers in several locations, ramp entry at the stable in Graydon Pool. The latest project is a ramp from the Graydon parking lot to the Linnwood Avenue sidewalk to prevent entry to, to provide entry to the Graydon Pool facility. So, this is just a requalification for the community development program.
Any questions or comments? All right.
Okay. Policy two, so this is the discussion honoring Roger Wygant.
Sure, yeah, and so we had a brief discussion where I sort of, myself and Boyd, a couple meetings ago, talked about ways for this council to honor Roger Wygant. Threw out three ideas. One of them was to put a plaque on the podium facing the member of the public who'd be speaking. Another idea is to plant a tree somewhere. And the other was to sort of name the street Wygant Way, or something to that effect, by his house on South Irving. In addition to one or more of those, I thought it would be nice, we could maybe do a reception in here, of all places, appropriate place, at some point when it made sense for his family to do that. I don't know if you have, if anyone's thought about this, and has any thoughts or comments or other suggestions even?
Mine is kind of a speech, actually.
Well, I'll be really brief. I just note that this seems to fit within what you're proposing, Mayor. You know, strikes, they all strike me, all three, as a good idea, you know, implementing all three of them. And I think it fits within the qualifying criteria for the dedication of village property, unless Mr. Rogers disagrees. I think it's 129-2C where you would honor persons who volunteered time or other valuable consideration to the village, whose names are requested to be honored by the dedication of village property, has to be a resident of the village, and contributed to the village in such a manner as to distinguish his or her contribution as an exceptional service to the village and its residents. And I think it's indisputable that that fits the person about whom we are now speaking.
Yeah, I personally think that the podium, which is where I first met Roger, is the best place for perhaps a plaque, or however we're going to put that in there. I think that the other thing that, and I mentioned this to Boyd and Ann, this is the time of year, as the weather warmed up, Roger would ride his bike around, and he would paint the poles. He would paint for the fire department the poles. So, maybe that's something we could organize, kind of a, maybe a painting day, or, because really, I don't think we have anybody to do that anymore. So, that might be another thing that we could, that we could do, and get other people to volunteer, and kind of follow the legacy of what he did.
Ready for the speech?
He also drove around without his shirt on, which was another thing that-
Not gonna go there.
I never had the privilege. So, my impression was, you know, when I was running for council, he was very warm and friendly, and encouraged me to feel comfortable in the courtroom. And I don't think we saw eye to eye on everything philosophically, but I felt comfortable around him. He was just a great, warm, friendly person to all. He was a lifelong Ridgewood resident, but let's face it, he was a gadfly. So, I looked up the definition of the word gadfly, and when you look that up in the dictionary, it says pest, nag, nudge, irritant, insect. So, you think about what, why on earth do we call our council, you know, frequent visitors, why do we call them gadflies? But he was a gadfly. And yet, we all feel so affectionately toward him. So, that's what makes him so unique and so special to me, because somehow or other, he managed to do that job without being abrasive or irritating. He was, he was able to, as Socrates said, sting the people out of complacency, preventing the city from becoming intolerant and careless, without offending anyone. And that's, that's what made him so special to me. I think he never showed disrespect, he never needled, he never sabotaged anyone. He was always polite and good-natured, and committed to listening. That's a skill. That is why I would like to distinguish his service as a prodder, and an energizer, and a civic volunteer. That's my speech.
Well stated, Socrates. Excellent. It's probably the first time Socrates has been quoted in this courtroom. That was excellent. Well, let's do this, and we'll wait for Councilman Ritchie to come back and stuff, and then we'll decide on one or more ways to do it. We'll work with the family, try to figure out the best time and what have you. One idea I just want to throw out to somebody, and I think, I think Roberta came up with this idea more generally, because we were talking about this. What a nice idea, putting this aside maybe, but for the shade tree commission from now. When we want to honor people, maybe it would be, to make it a practice of planting trees. And it's something we can run by the shade tree commission to take a look at, and can just sort of become more of a common practice, more generally, so. Good idea. All right, moving on to operations.
Yeah, I'll see one. Snow plowing agreement, this is to approve our snow plowing program with Bergen County. This is where we receive payment for the county to plow their roads that are in Ridgewood. So, it's a normal-
Great. Any questions or comments? All right, get ready for the manager's report.
Okay. I was gonna start with Garber Square, but, you know, I don't have to do that. Okay, just a couple of updates. Cottage Place, Lot 12, where we had an RFP out, we received, we received two bids, two proposals, and one of them looks pretty lucrative, $75,000 a year for the ground lease, one of them's $30,000. Having said that all, Chris will be looking at this over the next couple of weeks and come back with a recommendation. So, we had some activity at Lot 12, which is great news.
Can I make a comment on that?
Please.
Sure.
And this is, this is before your time, so, one of the, one of the concerns that I have, and I had, and I still have, who's determining whether that lease valuation is appropriate? So-
Yeah. And Chris and I, actually, Chris and I had a little discussion about that today.
Because that was one of the criteria that an appraisal would be done?
Yeah, yeah, and I think, I think we agreed that it would be good if we got some technical expertise in to do that. And so, right, I mean, we had that, I was thinking about somebody actually from the Finance Advisory Committee, I just don't know if there's somebody there that has that expertise.
You have to be a licensed, you have to be a licensed appraiser.
So, could you do it?
No. Nope.
Okay, so we'll need to, well taken. I mean, I was a little concerned about that, too.
Yep.
Because I can certainly do it.
No, neither can I.
Okay.
Maybe Bernie will reconsider.
I'm not, I'm not qualified. You have to be, you have to be a general, commercial.
Oh, you're not, oh, oh.
Yeah, I'm residential.
Ah, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, we definitely need someone, because the numbers are starting to look confusing to me. Okay, I'm gonna leave this, I think, for Gwen, but I just want to mention that we quickly moved on the abandoned property resolution and, or ordinance, and we're starting to put together village process and procedure. We met, Gwen was there, Matt was there, we had a couple of folks, and we, and we put, actually put together the committee that will be evaluating. So, I'll leave more for you to say on that, right? Okay. I always like to talk, well, I don't like to talk, but about the quarter, the quarter theft. So, I have two, two things. One thing, I just want to report that the overall revenues for the, for parking, utility, year over year, right now, is up. So, we're up, we're up about, a little over 4%, so, and we haven't finished the month of May yet, so we might be closer to 4.5%. So, the revenues continue, go up. On the negative side, we still don't have the engagement letter from JIF on the forensic. I'm beginning to, things move slowly sometimes, and Matt's been on top of it. Did you want to add anything to that?
Nothing, just that I spoke with the, I spoke with the attorney for JIF the other day, and just that they were working on it, that, you know, it gets decided by a committee there, even more so a committee than what, you know, we deal with on a daily basis with the council. So, it may take a little bit slower than we want it to, but it's certainly in the works, and certainly that they, certainly understood that they need it, they've just got to, you know, get the contractual arrangement set with this forensic accountant, and then we'll move as soon as that happens.
The JIF is Joint Insurance Fund.
Joint Insurance Fund, I'm sorry. No, it's not peanut, it's not peanut butter. It's not, okay. On the redevelopment zone that we talked about a couple of weeks ago at North Walnut, I did meet with Blaze before he went on vacation this week, and Chris and I discussed this morning as well. So, we're working on, and we'll come up with an RFP that we will discuss with the, with the council. Again, right now, given everybody's, what's going on with kind of our work schedules, that's probably, at this point, three weeks off, both for that and the analysis of Lot 12. But I think we can, I think we can expedite Lot 12 if we go out and try to find a technical person to, you know, to do the lease evaluation. My response to residence section, which I started last time, I think Boyd brought this issue up, at the town garage site, and whether or not we could use it for surface parking. We did receive a letter from the owner indicating his interest, his potential interest in surface parking, and so, Chris, I don't know if he's, if Chris, we were kind of busy the last 48 hours on Garber, so we will get to, get to that, okay? And North, North Road, I just want to share this. This was a person that came up to the microphone a couple of weeks ago. She was pretty angry about North Road. It's a cul-de-sac. It was after, we had described how we, how we decide, and Chris talked a little bit about it today, to pave streets, and that cul-de-sacs kind of came last. So, as I promised, as we promised, I went and visited the area, and we were probably, Chris, on that street for 20 minutes, 25 minutes. There was no traffic. Two people came out of driveways. As far as the road condition went, I mean, I'm not an expert, I now know that roads have spiders and alligatoring in them, but there were no significant potholes, there were no significant depressions. In all fairness, the road had been, we did some work on it the day before. So, the recommendation that we have, and that we shared with the resident, and I wrote her a letter, is that we will put her on the paving schedule for 2015, 2016. But we did have an opportunity, and it was a short window, to demo a piece of equipment that could have maybe put a layer over it, and she chose not to respond. So, I'm just sharing it with you as a, kind of a, she was here, and I said I would talk about, and some of this stuff is a little detailed, so if we're getting too detailed, we should let me know and all. We also had a resident through Meet, Meet the Mayor, who was concerned about 20 Park, and her concern, her house backs up on 20 Park, and I don't know if any of you have been there, but it's really quite pretty. And, oh, because you live near there.
A few times.
Yes. She lives near there. So, she was concerned about the appearance of the park. She really wanted us to remove dead trees, she wanted us to remove branches. So, we did a visit, several of us went over and walked the park, and, and she also wanted us to remove these stumps that were in the pond, kind of thing, because trees had fallen over. So, because 20 Park is considered a conservation area, little maintenance is and can be performed. So, as a result, when trees fall, they're allowed to decompose, providing an environment for the wildlife.
Yes.
It's nice. And we have the, we have the protected red-headed woodpecker, I'll never be able to say that again, residing in the area, in one of the trees that fell down, so we can't remove that tree. It's also a glacial kettle pond, and it's viewed as a riparian habitat, which means that we can't disturb area 50 feet from the water's nominal edge. So, we therefore can't pull out the stumps. So, we would, the kind of maintenance that we would apply there is any kind of maintenance that was precarious to individuals that are hiking. So, if there's a tree hanging over the trail, or there's a branch, we would remove that. So, we told her, I wrote her a, a letter, and I also spoke to her at some point, and told her that we would clean up the park like we normally do, and then we would revisit and walk the park with her again. So, yeah, I'll leave it at that. What was that, rabies clinic?
Did you do that?
No, I didn't, did I? No, I went the next, yes, thank you. I think Boyd brought up the condition on Glen Avenue when we had the rabies clinic. We took a look at it, and I guess the, the issue was, we think, there was a confluence of issues. One of the issues was that the rabies clinic this time also offered microchipping, which caused the volumes to increase, and that for the last eight years, we haven't had a problem with where it was located. And also, I guess, Janet, just remind me, I think there was an issue with parking.
Trucks were, trucks were blocking, were taking up a lot of parking, but we're not supposed to be that bad.
Right, okay, yeah. So, the feeling was because the dogs have shelter there, and they don't really have shelter in Graydon, that we would do this again, but we would be smarter about it, in the sense that we would split rabies from microchips and move forward. The next clinic, the cat clinic, is in Ho-Hocus, in Ho-Hocus, in January. The next shred day is September 27th, and we should discuss whether or not we want to keep it where it is. We're thinking we'll move it to Graydon.
I'm sorry, can I, I'm sorry, can I just jump in? Did you say, so you want to separate the-
The microchipping from the-
Really? Because that's a great opportunity for the microchipping.
No, but we would offer microchipping. We just offer it on a different day, because the feeling was that we had too many, we had too many animals, which was causing the back of-
Yeah, I'd like to talk about that, I mean, and I don't know, and maybe, you know, we could bring in some, I don't know if you spoke to Jeff Ball and others that are involved in this, because to them, it's a real opportunity, because most people don't know about microchipping, and so it's an opportunity to educate folks while they're online there.
Well, that's a good point.
So, I don't know, maybe there's a way we can sort of figure that out.
I mean, the issue was, I mean, there was a concern about the, the protection of the animals as well, so.
I mean, that makes sense, but maybe there's a way we can-
Okay.
Figure that out.
Maybe there's an alternative. Graydon Pool opens this Saturday. The good news is that the temporary pipe works. The bad news is the temporary pipe is-
Still there.
Is still there. And so, we're gonna make sure that, and it's operational to the sewer manhole. I guess we just about, we're about to, Chris, start either tomorrow, the laying of the other pipe, and that's a one to two-week effort. So, we'll take a look over there, make sure that we have this marked correctly. The other good thing is the sloped entry railing has been installed. So, that's done, that project is done, for the ramp. Two announcements, I have Meet the Manager this Saturday from 9:00 to noon. I do have appointments. I do. I think I have like six, right Janet, like six? Oh, three or four, I was exaggerating. And then, the Chief Michael Feeney Police Academy, June 26th to July 2nd, application deadline is June 1st. And I'm done.
Thank you. Another excellent report. All right, Bernie?
So, citizen safety, obviously, I'm going to send everybody an email and poll the, poll the group. Bergen League Municipalities, I toured with the rest of the, the rest of the league representatives, the Bergen County Utility Authority, and REAC, we don't have our meeting for another couple of weeks, so don't have anything else. That's it.
Great, thanks, Bernie. Thank you. You know, Mayor, earlier I mentioned responsible government, but, you know, we've heard in the village manager's report, a government that is also responsive, and that's, that really makes difference. And also, you know, people who may be watching this at home, two or three, if the cameras were turned that way, they would see what we see up here. I see Chief Van Gooer, I see Captain Luthke, I see Janet Fricki, Assistant Village Manager, there's Chris Rudishauzer, there's Frank Maritz, Tim Cronin, CFO Steve Sanzari. So, a lot of, a lot of the people involved in our village government, key people, who could probably be home watching Downton Abbey or something, but they're here this evening, and that suggests to me a government that is responsible, responsive, and really, a government of people who are really just so generous in how much they give. I mean, we have to be here, you don't. So, I mean, I thank you on behalf of the citizens of Ridgewood for making yourselves available for these meetings. My only report is from the planning board, which will meet tomorrow evening. Now, I know Tony Loving's gonna say, but it's not on the website, and you're quite correct. We're meeting tomorrow, tomorrow evening, the entire planning board will be there, as will our engineer, and our planner, and the secretary of the planning board, and the two attorneys for the planning board. And we have the privilege tomorrow of honoring one of our members who has served many years, and has also been chairman of the planning board. Morgan Hurley is, as you know, has resigned from the planning board, and it is truly a privilege for us to gather tomorrow evening at a restaurant in town and honor this gentleman for his many years of service. He left for personal, good personal reasons, and it's going to be a really good evening for the planning board, and we promise not to discuss valley, or the rezoning, anything like that, and I assure you, we won't. No question. But anyway, I'm looking forward to that evening tomorrow. Great, thank you. Thanks, Al. Quet?
I don't have much more to add about the abandoned structures, abandoned properties ordinance, really, because we'll watch that come to fruition, and it is going to make enforcing good behavior and good neighborly behavior a lot easier in the village. So, I was pleased with the meeting and the methodology that we're gonna follow. There are some neighbors in one pocket of Ridgewood who are really anxious to get something moving, but I, you know, the ordinance isn't going to be heard until June 11th, not in effect until June 11th, and we're gonna make sure that we move forward addressing equally all the abandoned properties that we can find, and not just handpicking the one or two that people are screaming the loudest about, doing a comprehensive full list as we begin. So, we're gonna have to have the whole committee meet and send out the Dear, what we're calling Dear Joe letters, to properties that have been identified as violating more than two, the things that are spelled out in the ordinance, and they fulfill the requirements for receiving a letter. And then, if they don't comply within a certain period of time, then we'll move forward with legal action. So, that's movement on that front. Everything else, I was gonna say that Graydon Pool is opening on Saturday, and I'm really excited about that. I'd like to see that membership is up this year, so everybody go buy your badges. And the library, just when I was at my Board of Trustees meeting, they talked about two new things at the library. new things at the library. Actually, the Homework Help Center is not new, but is not really being taken advantage of. Honored students at the high school are selected every year by a committee, and they sit in the library and give free tutoring in every subject to anybody who needs help, from 3:30 to 5:30, Monday through Thursdays, through the school year, October to May. And they're literally advertising to get kids to come take advantage of this free tutoring. But it's one of the things that we have, one of those things, we, you know, all our efforts that we put into the library do provide for our residents. Also, Nancy Green herself is teaching a course. There's new, a new thing called Career Support at the Library. It's for college graduates, starting Tuesday, June 24th, Job Career Accelerator classes. And Nancy will be teaching business etiquette, your manner, good manners to use during the interview and job, job selection processing, process. So you'll be, you'll be getting your mailers in the news, you'll be getting your mailers in the mail, and it has all this information on it, so make sure you read it.
Great. Thanks, Quet. Thanks, Gwen. Just three things. One is, planning board's meeting next week, and I just actually looked at my schedule to see what night it was, and I see that we're meeting twice next week. I hope one of those is a mistake. But Monday night, we're meeting to continue the, the public discussion of the Valley Hospital proposal Tuesday night. I don't know why it's in my schedule. I don't know. I'm hoping it's a mistake. It's not a mistake. Okay, so I'm meeting with the planning board twice next week. The second thing is, the access committee, our Ridgewood Community Access Network, is showing a movie at the library next Friday, next Thursday night. It's actually our monthly meeting, but we decided to watch a movie. It's called Murder Ball. And it's a movie that was made, I think, in like 2005, and it's about a quadriplegic rugby team that played in the Paralympics. It's an incredible movie. It's really powerful, entertaining, provocative, everything. It's a little about, probably about hour and fifteen minutes. So if anyone's interested, I think it's next Thursday, June 5th, at 7:30 in the library auditorium. And the third thing is, I'm just going to mention this, and I'm going to kick it back to you, before this meeting, oh yeah, wait, hold on a second, Jeremy Kleiman. Albert wants to mention that you're there, too.
I didn't see you hidden there, Jeremy. You were hidden when I mentioned the employees. Yet another employee who's here with us this evening.
But just before this meeting, at six o'clock in, in this room, we had a presentation from the, the Ridgewood High School Teen Leads Program. It was just incredible. I'm going to let Roberta talk about it. It's just been a great experience for me to be involved in, but today was the culmination of their, pretty much a year-long effort they've been undertaking.
Yeah, it was just, it was amazing. It's something we've been working on for a long, a long time. Teen Leads is, is designed after the Adult Leads Program in Bergen County. The Adult Leads Program is going on to its, I think, seventh year. I was in the second class of that program. I highly recommend it, particularly for people that are activists. It is a wonderful way...
What is it? You might want to...
Yeah, it's a civic leadership program where you spend nine months learning about different facets, facets of Bergen County. Every month, you have a seminar day, and you have experts that come in, speak with you. We have experiential visits, where you go places. So you'll do a topic like healthcare, or you'll do a topic like safety, law and order and safety, and you'll go to the jail, et cetera. They have guests, we have guest speakers. I'm part of the, kind of the leadership of that group. We have guest speakers and people to share ideas and thoughts. And after, during that, that nine months that you're in that program, you're also given a project to do. And then you work on that project and present it at a public forum. The head of the program is, some of you probably know him, is Pat Schuber, ex-Bergen County executive, and just amazing human being. And Lynn Allgrant, who's a councilwoman from Englewood, who actually shepherded teen leads. So the thought was, and it actually came, it actually came from my daughter, I have to say. When I was in the program, she said, why can't we have a program like you adults have for teenagers? And it sparked an interest, and we started working really hard, and I thought that Ridgewood would be, would be a great community to start it in. So we are the pilot site, and these kids were given, they were given what we call the mayor's challenge, and their challenge was to really determine the current state of civic participation in Ridgewood, voting and other areas, although they really focused on, on voting, I think. And how could one make that better? And so they presented today, all eighteen, eighteen, eighteen were there, we had nineteen in the class. I was very happy, I went on two of the seminar days with them. I saw them challenge Paul a little bit. He, he introduced the, the mayor's challenge to them, and they were quite, a lot of dialogue. They actually had Kathy Donovan in the afternoon on Government Day, and they actually would not let her go on shared services. They were actually challenging her. And it was really quite, it was, I don't want to go on, I can go on for an hour about this. But they presented to us tonight, they did a really good job. The job was, the program was funded by both the Ridgewood Education Foundation, I am a member of that, I'm just trustee, and the Volunteer Center of Bergen County. And so we are looking forward to doing it again. It is currently an extracurricular program that's done off hours. The kids get four days off to do each of these seminar days. We're hoping, next year, we'll run it the same way, but in year three, we're hoping to make it part of the curriculum, so that we almost have a civics curriculum in the high school, which we don't currently have. So I was, I was blown away today. I thought they did a really nice job.
Yeah. And one of their conclusions, one of their big conclusions, was that people don't appreciate the importance of local government.
Yeah.
And, you know, they really, they really got appreciation. They looked at trends in voting locally versus voting for, in general elections, and they all came away with a real appreciation for what gets done on a local level. However, when the question was asked, how many of you are interested in going into public service, they just looked at each other.
That's true. No, no, one of them came up to me later and said she, she loved to shadow me for a day. Yes.
That's great.
So that should be a good day.
It was a great program. It was a great program, and, you know, you, Lynn, and Tom Gorman really made that possible, so, so thanks for that. Anyway, with that, we will go to public comments. Public comments, anybody? Any questions, comments, suggestions, words of praise? Nothing? All right. Motion, or resolution to go into closed session, please.
Be resolved by the village council, the village of Ridgewood, that the village council meet in closed session on Wednesday, May 28th, 2014, at 7:30 PM, or as soon thereafter, as a matter on the agenda can be reached, and that closed session be held in the clock at room on the fourth floor of the Ridgewood Village Hall, 131 North Maple Avenue, Ridgewood, New Jersey. And be further resolved that the matters to be discussed in closed session are limited to legal matters, to include NJDEP fine Ridgewood water, and personnel legal matters, to include recycling division. These matters are allowable under NJSA 10 colon four dash 12 that second, be further resolved that the minutes of this meeting shall be made available to general public when such matters have been deemed completed by resolution of the village council. May I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
None.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.